All right. All right. Thank you, Henry. Well, good afternoon, everybody. The time is four thirty-two and I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. My name is Margaret Carlson Van Dort. I'm the Chair of the Alaska Board of Fisheries. It is Wednesday, April nineteenth. The time is four thirty-two P. M. And today we have five of seven board members present. However, before proceeding any further, I'd like everybody to take the chance to introduce themselves. I'll begin with board members. Kind of on the order that you're on the screen there and then we'll go, I'll do my best to to remember the order in which we sit around the table and I'll call on you and then you can go ahead and introduce. A D F and G staff that are here and then. I'll proceed from there. All right. So, Mr. Carpenter, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. Tom Carpenter from Cordova.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Stan Zare from the Village of Tana.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mackenzie Mitchell, Fairbanks.
And. John Wood from Willow, though the screen is not popping up for some reason.
See you and hear you loud and clear, John.
Okay.
And and again, my name is Margaret Carlson Van Dort, joining everybody today from Anchorage. Mr. Commissioner, would you please introduce any staff that you have joining us today?
This is Doug Vincent, line commissioner, Alaska Department of Fish and Game, and I can't see how to see what my staff has done here, so I'm going to let them introduce themselves.
All right, sounds good. Let's start with the commercial fisheries division.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Sam Raybong. I'm the Director of Division of Commercial Fisheries and with us today is John Lenderman, the A Y K Regional Supervisor, Chuck Brazil, A Y K Management Coordinator. And we have one more. Who's with, oh, Nick Smith, sorry, the Area Management Biologist for Cusco. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Director Raybong, Division of Sportfish, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, Tom Talby, Acting Director of Division of Sportfish. I'll be the only sportfish person here today.
Welcome, Tom. Thank you. Subsistence Division.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Lisa Olson with Division of Subsistence. Also joining us today is Alita Trainer. She's the Northern Region Program Manager.
Thank you. And I'm trying to remember. I also see that we have Deputy Commissioner Ben Mulligan with us this afternoon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Ben Mulligan, Deputy Commissioner, Alaska Department of Fish and Game.
Hi, welcome, Ben. And going around the table, Division, sorry, Department of Law.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Aaron Peterson with the Department of Law.
Hi, Aaron, and Department of Public Safety.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Aaron Fernzel, Alaska Wildlife Troopers.
Welcome. Good to see you all. And Board Support. Director Nelson.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. My name is Art Nelson. I'm Executive Director for the Board of Fisheries and I am doing this meeting from Bethel this evening. Also with Board Support Staff, we've got Henry Lysia, our public publications guy. He's doing sound. Kyle Campbell, our Interior Region Coordinator, is running the Zoom and he's our main Zoom bouncer this afternoon. Free Fernandez is doing the the R C's. And Savannah Hollingworth also out here is putting the sound out to the dial-in, listen-only line. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Nelson, from the Office of Subsistence Management. Do we have Mr. Pappas on the line today?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, George Pappas, OSM Audio Only. It's great to be here. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us today. Is there anybody that I've missed? All right, very good. Thank you all for joining us, making time this afternoon for this special meeting. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, the board staff published a notice in the Alaska Online Public Notice System, posted the notice on its main website, the meeting website and its designated posting place, and also distributed it to its usual list of email recipients. Not going to read it, but copies are available from the Executive Director for those who are interested in the complete text. I'm encouraging you to send him an email or reach out through the board's website and request that if you would like it. Public Notice and Proposal was distributed, proposal singular, was distributed to the local fishing game advisory committees. It's posted online. They were also sent by email to the interested parties and organizations. Public comments were solicited for this proposal and board members have received a copy of all the on-time written public comments. Copies of all these materials are updated frequently throughout this meeting and also can be accessed on the board's website on the webpage specific to this meeting, which I believe is right at the top of the of the Board of Fisheries website. The tentative agenda from this for this meeting is also posted there. The agenda is subject to change, but it's pretty short today, so I don't I don't plan on a lot of that, but we'll we'll stay on the agenda as closely as possible. The board will not be taking any public testimony during this meeting, so I encourage the public who's online and listening to submit written comments on the proposal under consideration. If there's any additional information you feel the board should consider in addition to the public comments that the board has already received, please make sure that your written comments clearly include your name, the organization that you represent. Since this meeting is likely to be relatively short, I would encourage anyone interested in submitting written comments to do so as soon as possible. We may take a short break during the meeting to allow board members an opportunity to review any additional written comments or R C's that come through that may be received. And I would encourage board members and members of the public to pull up that meeting webpage and and refresh it frequently to see if any R C's have been posted. Unlike our normal meetings where we have regular distributions, Board Support Staff will be uploading any R C's that come in as soon as they are received, and so just keep checking checking on that and I'll I'll try and keep an eye on it. I know Director Nelson will be monitoring that also and let us know and if if any board members would like to take a short break to review any R C's that may come through, I'm happy to accommodate that. So if if there are written comments that come through during this meeting, they can be submitted electronically in a Word document or a PDF through that Word website. A link to the submission portal is prominently featured on the meeting page of our website where all of the materials for this meeting are posted. Of course, written comments can also be submitted by fax to nine zero seven four six five six zero nine four. And, you know, probably just take, like I said, a little bit of time to make sure that there haven't been any faxes submitted with additional R C's or written comments, and if there are, please let me know. Board Support Staff just flag it and and we can take some time to get it distributed. Given the short nature of this meeting, again, I'd urge any additional written comments to be as brief as possible. We will not accept comments more than five single-sided pages or the equivalent double-sided pages unless specific information is requested by the board that requires more pages than allowed under the standard. All documents received at this board meeting will be assigned a log number called an R C. And all written materials will be retained for permanent record of the board. And since this is a full-blown, regular board meeting, we're going to go ahead and do our ethics disclosures. And I'm going to be taking ethics disclosures in the same order that we did introductions, and so I will begin at this time, well, before we start ethics disclosures, are there any questions from members of the board or staff about how we're going to proceed today? Okay.
No questions, Madam Chair, but I do have something I like to put on the record if I might.
Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the purposes of this meeting, understanding that there's a clear direction that the our Vice Chair is absent and the Chair must make an ethics disclosure, I would I would move that member would be considered Vice Chairman.
I'll second that and ask unanimous consent.
Thank you. Not hearing any or seeing any objection. Congratulations, Mr. Wood, you are Vice Chair for the purposes of this meeting. Thank you, guys. Yeah, unfortunately, Mr. Jensen could not join us today, and so just to make sure we're we're procedurally correct, I appreciate the motion. Thank you. All right, so beginning with ethics disclosures, Mr. Carpenter, will you please put yours on the record at this time?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I stated earlier, my name is Tom Carpenter. I reside in Cordova and currently retired. Divested myself completely of all businesses, including limited entry permits and I F Q's. My primary income comes from investment income and personal savings managed by Merrill Lynch. My wife is employed by the Cordova School District as an educator. I receive the Alaska Permanent Fund Dividend, as do my wife and daughter, and receive a stipend for serving on this board. Neither I nor anyone in my immediate or extended family have any financial interest in any business which is related to fish and wildlife resources or belong to any organizations which any financial gain can be attributed. Upon confirmation, I resign my position on all boards, including the Copper River Prince William Sound Advisory Committee, the Prince William Sound Aquaculture Board. There are no proposals before the board that will benefit myself nor any immediate or extended family. No member of my family or extended family is involved with any lawsuits against the state or the Alaska Department of Fish and Game, and I believe this statement to be true, correct, and complete.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Carpenter? Seeing none, Mr. Carpenter, you can fully participate on the proposal before us today. Mr. Zare.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Stan Zare and I live in the Village of Tana on the Yukon River. I was born in Boston, Massachusetts, and moved to Alaska in nineteen seventy-three, married with four children, three of whom reside in Alaska. I've made most of my living over the years as a contract fisherman for research projects for the U. S. Fish and Wildlife Service and managing managing my own research grants for the Office of Subsistence Management in the Yukon River Panel. Less of a significant income came from my trapping, commercial fishing, Alaska Reality TV contracts, mechanic and equipment work for the in Tana. Almost all the above has ended in the last two years. Presently, my income is derived from mechanic equipment work with the Tana Tribal Council and City of Tana. And as a contractor for six weeks in the summer for an ichthyophonus disease project for the for the U. S. Fish and Wildlife Service. I and no member of my family are involved in a lawsuit with the State of Alaska. I'm currently not on any boards or organizations associated with fisheries issues. I I receive a stipend for service from this board and also my Alaska PDF dividend. I have a permanent Alaska hunting, fishing, and trapping license being seventy-three years old. I currently hold a C F E C Yukon River Fish Will Permit, and my son has a commercial set gill net permit. I see no personal and economic potential conflicts with any of the proposals currently before the Board of Fisheries. And I believe any personal or financial interest I or any family member may have in the proposals before us are insignificant. I hereby state that the above is true, correct, and complete to the best of my knowledge. Thank you.
Thanks, Stan. Are there any questions from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Zare, you may fully participate in the matter before us today. Ms. Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Mackenzie Mitchell and I have resided in Alaska since two thousand and ten. My immediate family consists of my mother and two brothers, all of whom reside outside of Alaska. In addition, I do not have any relatives that are from Alaska, reside in Alaska, or are involved in Alaska's fisheries. I will receive a stipend for service on the board, and I do receive the Permanent Fund Dividend as a resident of Alaska. I annually purchase a resident sportfish hunt and trap license for personal hunting and fishing recreation in the state. I teach economics and recreation management courses at the University of Alaska Fairbanks, and I am currently taking an aviation maintenance technician course. In addition to my work with the university, I work seasonally for hunting and fishing outfitters across the state, serving roles of sport fishing guide and hunting guide under a registered guide outfitter license, sport fishing guide license, and merchant mariner credential. In two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one, I guided fishing charters in Prince William Sound and the Gulf of Alaska while basing out of the Port of Valdez. And years prior to two thousand twenty, I guided fishing charters in the Gulf of Alaska basing out of the Kodiak Islands. I did not guide any sportfish charters in two thousand twenty-two. I occasionally work providing flight instruction and in the restaurant industry. I hold two business licenses in the state of Alaska, one for an air taxi service and one for a hunting and fishing outfitter company. Only the hunting side of the outfitting company is operational at this time, but it is my intent to at some point operate a sport fishing company in the south central sportfish area. Neither I nor any member of my immediate family are members of any organization or corporation that is involved in a lawsuit against the state, the board, or the Department of Fish and Game, or where the state, the board, or the department is a party to the lawsuit. I do not believe that I have any conflicts with the matters before us, and I certify that to the best of my knowledge, this statement is true, correct, and complete. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I rule that you can fully participate on the matter before us today. Thank you. Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In compliance with A S thirty-nine fifty-two, I'm John Wood residing in Willow, Alaska. I receive a pension from the State of Alaska after serving in the Alaska Court System, the Anchorage Municipal Assembly, and as staff to Alaska State Legislature. I also receive social security benefits and the Alaska Permanent Fund Dividend, as does my wife. I am also on contract with the State of Alaska on an hourly as-needed basis unrelated to any issues before this board. I fish recreational recreationally and have a permanent hunting fishing license, which is one of the few advantages of reaching seventy-six years of age. I will receive a stipend for service on this board of fisheries. My wife, Mary, is now retired. She is administrator of a trust composed of assets, none of which are related to any fish business. There are no interests of a personal or financial nature that I nor any member of my immediate family has that may be affected by any of the proposals to be considered by this board at this meeting, of which may constitute a conflict of interest under the Alaska Executive Branch Act. Neither I nor any member of my immediate family or members of any organization or corporation that is involved in a lawsuit against the state, the board, or the Department of Fish and Game, or where the state, the board, or the department is a party to the lawsuit. I certify, to the best of my knowledge, this statement is true, correct, and complete. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Are there any questions from Member Wood? Seeing none, I rule that you may also fully participate in the matter before us today. And with that, I will turn it over to you, John, and I will put my ethics disclosure on the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Proceed.
All right, so my name is Margaret Carlson Van Dort and was born and raised in Alaska. I currently reside in Anchorage. I am currently employed as a president and CEO for West Incorporated, the Native Village Corporation for the Village of Chickamae formed under the Alaska Native Claim Settlement Act. I am a shareholder in Coneyak and in the Bristol Bay Native Corporation. My significant other is a heavy equipment operator and member of the International Brotherhood of Operating Engineers number three oh two. We both purchased resident sportfish licenses. Both he and I receive State of Alaska Permanent Fund Dividends, and I also receive a stipend for my service on this board. Neither I, my significant other, members of my immediate family, nor my employer have any financial interest in fisheries. Similarly, neither I, my significant other, members of my immediate family, nor my employer are involved with any lawsuits with the State of Alaska, the Alaska Department of Fish and Game, or the Board of Fisheries. And, Mr. Chairman, this information is true, correct, and complete to the best of my knowledge.
Thank you. Any questions from board members? Seeing here none, I rule that you have no conflict and may participate fully in the matter before us.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. That concludes ethics statements, and we weren't really prepared to have any full-blown staff reports. We did receive the full complement of 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 reports on the A Y K Fisheries during the A Y K Meeting. But I did ask staff to just prepare maybe a little refresher or give us a couple of high points with respect to the Cusco Bay Fishery, particularly just to kind of help refresh our memories a little bit before we get into deliberations of the proposal. So I just want to thank staff for being able to hopefully guide us through that with a little bit of, you know, not not a ton of notice, but I thought it would be helpful. So with that, Nick, I don't know if you'll you'll be presenting today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, this is Nick Smith with the Alaska Department of Fish and Game. I can give a brief update to the board, so give me one second to share my screen here.
Thank you.
Everybody see it okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Madam Chair and members of the board, my name is Nick Smith and I'm the Cusco Area Subsistence and Commercial Fisheries Manager. I will be providing a brief overview of Cusco Bay subsistence and commercial fisheries with an emphasis on the years since the last board cycle. The next series of slides will provide an overview of Cusco Bay fisheries with District Four shown in the rectangle and District Five shown in the oval. The main drainages that make up Cusco Bay are the Connect Talk and Good News Rivers. The rivers within Cusco Bay have experienced the same poor king salmon returns as the rest of the Cusco Bay area. Sauk eye salmon have had some of the highest runs and escapements on record. Due to the lack of funding, we have not been able to assess chum or coho returning to this area since the last board meeting. However, local fishers and catch statistics have indicated that the chum and coho runs have been poor in recent years. The Cusco Bay area salmon A N S has been met or exceeded annually. In two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one, a single large-scale processor operated in commercial fishing districts four and five. Due to the poor king salmon returns, the department has continued to implement restrictions to the subsistence fishery in District Four. These restrictions include closing subsistence fishing one day a week and restricting gill net mesh size to six inch or less. During the commercial fishing season, subsistence fishing was closed before, during, and after each commercial period. Commercial fishing in districts four and five is managed according to the District Four and Five Salmon Management Plan and targets salmon bound for the Connect Talk and Good News Rivers. The commercial fishing season was delayed until late June in two thousand twenty and early July two thousand twenty-one to allow for king salmon escapement in order to achieve escapement goals in light of continued low returns. An additional action taken was closing marine waters around the mouth of the Connect Talk River in District Four during the first few commercial fishing periods to reduce the harvest of king salmon. Commercial periods in both fishing districts were announced by emergency order and were based on commercial catch statistics and aerial surveys. The department does not anticipate any commercial gill net openings in Cusco Bay fishing districts four and five in two thousand twenty-three. This graph depicts commercial salmon harvest in District Four from two thousand and eight to two thousand twenty-two. The bottom axis is year and the left axis is number of fish harvested. The colored lines correspond to each salmon species, and the number above all lines in each year is how many permits made at least one delivery. There were no commercial fisheries in District Four from two thousand sixteen to two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-two. Record-low participation, above-average Sauk eye and weak chum salmon runs, and utilizing a conservative approach to the District Four fishery to protect king salmon can account for fishery performance in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one. The two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one seasons saw the fewest permits fished in District Four on record. With the exception of Sauk eye salmon, commercial harvests for all species in District Four were well below average in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one. This table shows aerial survey estimates for king and Sauk eye salmon on the Connect Talk River between two thousand and four and two thousand twenty-two. The numbers highlighted in red indicate years that established escapement goals shown at the bottom of the table were not achieved. Where there is no data, either the survey did not meet acceptable criteria or was not flown due to either weather or time constraints. Madam Chair, this concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you. Questions from any members of the board, Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Question to staff, the years that you've indicated no commercial fisheries, was that because there was just none interested in going to that fishery, or is that something because of department action that there was no commercial fishing taking place?
Through the chair, this is Nick Smith with the Department of Fish and Game. To answer your question, Mr. Wood, there was no buyers or processors in the area in those years.
Okay, so it had nothing to do with any kind of emergency audit or anything else coming out of the department, then?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Chair, if I can ask staff, and I don't think they're going to have the answer, but this format we're using, it's the only person here with a possibility, and that is in P C two, which was submitted by the village of, how do you pronounce it, Quinnahawk? Anyway, if I'm mispronouncing, I apologize, but they made mention in the second page that for years, the subsistence fisheries fishermen have undergone some reduction on their own in an effort to protect and help rebuild the Chinook and Chum stocks. Do you know what that effort entailed?
Through the wood, Mr. Woods. So we've been, and we'll get to it when we get to our staff comments, but we've had discussions with the Native Village of Quinnahawk annually for a number of years now, and part of the restrictions that we've taken of closing one day a week and restricting it to six-inch or less mesh gill nets has been in consultation with the Native Village of Quinnahawk.
And then last question, Madam Chair. On slide four, if you could put that back in front of us. I hope I had the right number. Where you say subsistence closed during commercial periods. Is that something that the department requires or regulations require?
Through the chair, Mr. Woods. So that was a mandated regulation at the time that those fishing periods were prosecuted. If you remember from our A Y K meeting, the board passed a proposal to eliminate the directed closures around and with surrounding commercial fishing periods.
Okay, but while it was still in force, that was the reason for closing subsistence?
That is correct.
Okay. I have no other questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. You answered one of my questions, or you asked one of my questions too, so it was the same, that last point as well. Thank you. Other board questions? Can't see very good on the side. Not seeing any. If you could go. So with with respect, I think, Nick, I think you said to those two, at the beginning in the map that you had, there was two areas. And then the escapement goals that you showed were just for the Connect Talk River, I believe. Is that correct? Is that the is that the only river or the only escapement goals that we're concerned with at this point with this proposal?
Madam Chair, yes, so the proposal at hand is identifying District Four and the the river that that would drain into is the Connect Talk River, and there's currently two escapement goals aerial-based for one for Sauk eye and one for Chinook salmon.
Very good. Thank you. I just wanted to make that clear. Any other board questions? All right. Are we getting it? Have we received any R C's? Doesn't look like it. All right, I'll keep checking on the R C's, but let's go ahead. If there's no other questions in this space, Mr. Pappas, I believe you wanted to open or give us a quick update on on the Federal Subsistence Board actions?
Madam Chair, if I may interject, Mr. Pappas contacted me. He was still having further issues with technology regarding this. So he asked me to pass along what Federal Subsistence Board just passed. So here, just earlier this afternoon, the Federal Subsistence Board considered the Special Action F S A twenty-three oh one, which proposed to close the portion of the Connect Talk River within the boundary of the refuge to Chinook and Chum salmon for non-federally qualified users for the month of June for this for this year and next year. Ultimately, the board decided to only take action for chum salmon for those for those periods of time. And if you would like, I can give a kind of a synopsis on what I heard the board deliberate on, but I will leave that up to you guys to decide.
Why don't you go ahead and roll with it? Let us know.
Okay.
She was.
Oh, primarily, the reason they took Chinook off the table is you saw the numbers that that Nick Smith put up, that we are still making the aerial survey goals for that, and we had the data to show it. So O S M recommended to pull away that portion of the closure, but given they felt that since they didn't have the same sort of data showing either way for chum salmon, they decided to stay with that portion of the request and close directed chum harvest for non-federally qualified users during that time.
Thanks, Ben. And just that I'm, so the closure was just for non-federally qualified. The federally qualified users still have the opportunity to harvest subsistence on chum.
So it's so it's only now for, at least for targeted chum, it's only federally qualified users, so non-federally qualified users can't come in and plus some between the sportfish clothes. Between the sport fish closure, it pretty much takes everybody off the table for for targeted chum, but they can still. Non federally qualified users can still come in for the other species, so still come in for Chinook. And Coho and Saka if necessary.
Okay, and then I don't know if this question is for you or perhaps Nick, but in terms of assessing escape and goals for chum. And the Connectoc River, is that purely aerial survey or is there some wares or how is that? How is that done?
I'd leave that up to Nick.
Okay, Nick.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nick Smith with the department. Currently, there are no escape and goals for chum salmon on the Connectoc River.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am a person who learns a lot by reading, much more so than listening, so bear with me if you would. Question to either Nick or or to Ben. If I understand the order that you're referencing. Then we still have a group of subsistence fishermen who may or may not travel down to this area and fish with multiple nets. Is that correct?
This only has to do with the in river portion, and I believe you can't fish multiple nets in river, but Nick can always correct me.
Through the chair, this is Nick Smith with the department. Board member Wood. So a. I guess the short answer is yes, somebody or a group of individuals could go down and operate multiple nets in this area. The federal closure only applies to the Connectoc River proper. What this proposal one seventy three is looking at is out in district four, which is a saltwater out in front of the village of Quinahawk. And as it stands right now, a net can be operated by an individual. So this would still be the case that people could go down, travel there and operate multiple nets out of the same boat.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We'll go ahead and move into, I'm gonna check the R Cs one more time, move into deliberations and I also. Have noticed that I was remiss at the beginning of this meeting and stating this explicit purpose. And the purpose of this special meeting was for the consideration of proposal one seventy three, which was an on time submitted. Proposal which failed to make it into the proposal book, and so we did not deliberate it during the A Y K meeting and so. In order to honor the fact that this was an on time proposal, that was the entire purpose of of this meeting and. Specifically for the consideration of proposal one seventy three, I know that it was stated on the record, I think under miscellaneous business. At our statewide meeting, but I probably should state that here now too. So I don't see any additional R Cs, so with that, let's go ahead and move into deliberations and proposal number one seventy three. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt proposal number one seventy three, please.
Move to adopt one seventy three. Again.
Staff comments?
Thank you, Ma'am Chair, Nick Smith with the department. Proposal one seventy three, five A C oh one, two seven zero lawful gear and gear specifications and operation. And five A C zero seven, three, three, one gill net specifications and operations. This proposal would close Cusquem area district four subsistence and commercial salmon fisheries on Sundays. And allow only one gill net to be operated per vessel in the subsistence and commercial salmon fisheries between June one and July fifteen. Currently, in the subsistence fishery, salmon may be taken by gill net. Beach saying a hook and line attached to a rod or pole, handline, dip net. Or fish wheel unless closed by emergency order. Salmon may also be taken by spear in the Connectoc and Arolle River drainages. The aggregate length of set gill nets or drift gill nets in use by an individual for taking salmon may not exceed fifty fathoms. The maximum depth of gill nets with six inch or smaller mesh may not be more than forty five meshes in depth. And gill nets with greater than six inch mesh may not be more than thirty five meshes in depth. In the commercial fishery, salmon may be taken only with set gill nets and drift gill nets. A person may not operate or assist in operating more than one type of gear at any time. A gill net must have a mesh size of six inch or less and may not be more than forty five meshes in depth. The aggregate length of a set gill net or drift gill net may not exceed fifty fathoms. Except that if the commissioner determines that there is a harvestable surplus of salmon. The commissioner may by emergency order. Close the fishing season and immediately reopen a season during which the aggregate length of a set gill net or drift gill net may not exceed a hundred fathoms. If adopted, Cusquem area district four subsistence and commercial fishers. Fisheries would be closed on Sundays and only one gill net could be operated per vessel in the subsistence and commercial fishery between June one and July fifteen. Harvest of king sockeye and chum salmon and subsistence opportunity may decrease by an unknown amount. For background, in recent years, Quinahawk residents have expressed in meetings and conversations with the department there that there has been a dramatic increase in subsistence fishing effort. From Cusco Quim River residents, subsistence fishing in district four. They relate that this increase in effort is not only from increased numbers of vessels traveling to district four. But multiple individuals deploying several gill nets from a single boat. Increased fishing pressure is due to subsistence fishing restrictions that have been implemented annually on the Cusco Quim River. To conserve king and chum salmon. The native village of Quinahawk has proposed this solution to provide subsistence opportunity based on their local fishing preferences. To maintain fishing time and allow only one net per boat. In consultation with the native village of Quinahawk and B K, the department has generally implemented these changes since two thousand and nineteen. Department comments. The department is neutral on the provisions of subsistence opportunity as well as the allocative aspects of this proposal. The department supports regulatory changes that during during periods of low productivity. May help to ensure adequate escape and possibly increase future yields of king and chum salmon. Although closing the fishery for one day and limiting boats to one net does represent a reduction in subsistence opportunities. These changes reflect local fishing preferences. Further, subsistence fishermen would benefit since these changes would reduce the probability of having to take an in season management action using emergency order authority. By reducing fishing effort to one net per boat. This proposal would create a more orderly fishery and also align subsistence and commercial fishing regulations in district four. The department is is supportive of additional management tools that provide for increased conservation while attempting to minimize impacts to social and cultural fishing practices. Of Quinahawk village residents who traditionally fish in district four. Thank you, Ma'am Chair.
Thanks, Nick. More discussion? Uh, yeah, Mr. Carpenter then Mr. Wood, and then I have a couple of questions too. Mr. Carpenter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nick, just a quick clarification. So the current regulations. Is stated in the department's comments for the subsistence fishery. State that salmon may be taken with a gill net beach saying hook and line, handline, dip net or fish wheel. Is the way that this proposal is written? Is it going to? Make that make it more difficult for people to utilize these current regulatory ways of harvesting fish? Or is it specifically addressing the issue of a gill net from a boat?
Through the chair, Mr. Carpenter. This proposal as written will only be addressing gill nets. I don't see an impact to all of the other forms of legal subsistence gear.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wood?
I have two questions. One, I couldn't help but notice the absence of any A C comment. Am I to assume that there's no A C in this particular area and that the regional federal subsistence? Committee is the one that did. Respond that that'd be the only one we were gonna receive on this? Guess that's all and staff, is there an A C in the area?
Through the chair, Miss Member Woods, there is an A C in the area. They did not meet prior to this board meeting. I don't know, Director Nelson wanted to expand on that at all, but yeah, there is an A C for this area, but they did not meet prior to this meeting.
Yeah, Art, would you, if you have anything further to add?
No, what Mr. Smith said is correct. They just did not have an opportunity to meet prior to this meeting, so we don't have a position from the local A C.
Okay, thank you. And then back to Nick. Nick, we have a situation which I really am not happy to see in that we now have subsistence versus subsistence in competition for. The the fishery resource and it's a sad day when that takes place, but nonetheless, we have a group of subsistence fishermen. Who apparently are traveling by boat and fishing in a different style than the local fishermen are. By doing what proposal one seventy three is asking us to do, does it just make it basically not feasible for those people to make that trip? To fish in those waters?
Through the chair, Member Woods. It doesn't make it not feasible. It definitely adds. More effort involved in going down there and fishing, so it may be. Disadvantageous for people to go down from the river and fish in that area, but it still is a possible method for people to go down there.
Give me an idea of the distance that they're traveling.
So depending on if if. I'll use Bethel as a reference. That's a general location where a high population is. You're looking at a. Yeah, probably a hundred, hundred and twenty five mile one way boat ride. So I'll be. I don't know if I was if I was putting a time on it, probably taking eight hours to get down there.
So significant investment. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I was on the fence walking into this meeting and I'm still on the fence. And I'm gonna wait to hear other comments from other board members, but I have some real problems dealing with. This particular situation, even though I have always favored local choices to how they manage their own fisheries and. And I'll wait to hear what others have to allow.
I have I have a couple of questions for you, Nick. So. You know, sort of building off of Member Carpenter's question, so this only affects the use of the gill nets, whether that be from a boat or from a beach. I understand that and. In the current regulations per staff comments, it says that the aggregate length of a set gill net or drift gill net may not exceed fifty fathoms. So do those restrictions apply to those those? I'm assuming those those lengths are applied to the subsistence fishery as well. Is that correct?
Ma'am Chair, in the subsistence fishery in the entirety of the Cusquem area. The aggregate length of gill nets, whether being set or drift, used by any individual. For the taking of salmon may not exceed fifty fathoms.
Okay, what's what's is that the length? I'm assuming that's the length of a typical gill net since that's what the regs state, right?
That's correct.
Okay, and if there's and are they targeting chums specifically? Are they targeting kings? What are folks? What is the subsistence fishery that people will have concerns about they're targeting?
They're specifically targeting kings.
Kings, okay.
Traveling down from the Cusco Quim River and then targeting kings.
Okay. And. Because and and they're targeting kings, but we in the Connectoc River, kings have been have been meeting their escape and goals, correct? Recently.
That is correct, Ma'am Chair. They've been meeting their scheme and goal by aerial on the lower portion of the scheme and goal.
And are there any concerns in terms of the subsistence targets to us? To any targeting or 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 catching of chum salmon?
Ma'am Chair. Depending on what time of the year that people are traveling down to go fishing in that area. You it'll be a mixed fishery of kings, sockeye and chum. At using a net of six inch or less, you will be catching really anything that's in the water at that time of the year.
Okay. But we don't have an escape and goal for chum, so we don't have any real way of assessing. How chums are doing in the on the river, right? In the river?
Ma'am Chair, we don't have any direct assessment for chum salmon in the Connectoc River right now. All we have to base on is. What we hear from local people fishing down there, the last couple of years of catch and effort data from the commercial fishery. And just the general pattern of what A Y K chum stocks have been doing the last handful of years.
And so from the department's management perspective, and I don't know this, if there's any enforcement. Issue associated with this either is you mentioned in your staff comments that this would. The department has supported this and that it would allow for a more orderly fishery. Is that just because? You know, it's easier to assess whether people are following the rules, whether they're subsistence fishing. I mean, what is the real advantage of the department sees to restricting? The number of nets?
Ma'am Chair, what I see is the biggest benefit of this is, like I said in my staff comments that. When conservation acts actions need to be taken, you're looking at time and area or gear restrictions. It's very clear from talking with the native village of Quinahawk that they value time. Over multiple gear restrictions, so then when talking there, you know, reducing it to one day. Closed fishing and also one net per boat, you're effectively reducing the amount of fishing time out there, so. From my perspective, if I need to take a management action, I'm gonna either be looking at time or gear. And listening to the community down there and then wanting to reduce gear. Because they value the time component. That's really what I see as a benefit from this proposal.
I feel like I'm missing something here, though. I mean, if the kings are meeting their escape and goal. And there was no directed commercial fishery, not because of a management restriction, but because there wasn't, you know, a market necessarily for those fish. Then I'm just wondering, what is the conservation concern that the department is trying to address here with respect to restricting the subsistence fishery?
Through the chair or Madam Chair. So. From the king perspective with what we've been observing with king stocks. The last handful of years where we got decreased productivity. If the Cusco Quim River continues to say shut down and we continue to get more and more pressure on the Connectoc stock. There runs the risk that then we run into a situation where we are now below the escape and goal. In multiple years, if we don't have a management tool to try and put more fish in the river.
So this is proactive?
Now, I'm sure, yeah, that's what we're trying to be instead of being reactory to things, we're trying to be a little proactive here.
Okay, thank you. That's helping me. Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nick, I think I think you just kind of answered my question and and it was primarily is. You know, in in an attempt to try and. Conserve a resource that we know king salmon stocks have been struggling in the shift in effort that the native village of Quinahawk's identifying where a lot of people are traveling to these areas to come and fish now because. It seems to be one of the stocks that is still faring fairly well. That was essentially my question to the department is, is there a concern about the shift in effort? Kind of being concentrated on the stock when we know that king salmon stocks are struggling in other places? And what I and Nick, if you could just confirm, is that that kind of the stance that the department's coming from?
Through the chair. Board member Mitchell, that is correct.
Another board discussion? Question? Mr. Wood?
Nick, the issues, concerns that were just raised by two previous speakers. Does the department not have emergency authority to address that contingency?
Through the chair, board member Wood. The only authority we have down there right now is time and area. So we do not have the option to restrict gill nets to one net per boat. We can, we have. Time and area to close the fishery or reduce the mesh size of the gill nets that are being used currently down there.
So you could by emergency order, close it on Sunday, whatever day of the week it is that they were requesting. But you could not address the multiple nets? Is that what I'm hearing?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And Mistress Ray?
Yes. Yeah, I too wonder what I'm missing because it it seems kind of. I I I hope it it seems like it's kind of just refreshing to see somebody be proactive about this stuff and. And and, you know, I read the comments from the. And, 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 you know, I, I read the comments from the Fairbanks Fishing Game AC, the, and of course, the, the proposer of the proposal, and then the Yukon Cuscoquam Delta Subsistence Regional AC. All those were in favor of it. I, 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 I don't see how I could, I, I, and I thought this, you know, in reading stuff before the meeting, I, I, I don't see how I could not vote in favor of this. I guess that's all I have.
Thank you. So if the department can only address time and area and the board, let's say the board adopts this proposal, that removes any latitude that the department may have in terms of allowing for additional nets if stock allows for that or the department's concerns are alleviated. Is that correct? Somebody from the department?
Sorry, Madam Chair. This is Nick with the Department of Fishing Game. This, as proposed, this would be set in regulation that it would be a guaranteed thing to happen. If runs rebounded, what my expectation would be, if, if all the king runs start to rebound, because Cuscoquam area generally track together, they're like systems and neighbors, that you would see a reduction in the number of people traveling down to W4 to go fishing. And like you've seen in the PCs and in our staff comments, the traditional way of fishing from people that reside in Quinnahock is one net per boat and not fishing on Sundays. So I don't see that as a long-term detriment to the people that fish that area traditionally. In addition, we do have these board meetings every three years and they can be readdressed when if runs rebound.
Thank you. And Nick, I don't know if this question is to you or to the subsistence division, but what is the level of subsistence effort that you are seeing that this is trying to address? So, I mean, that's a significant boat ride, you know, and, and cost to travel there to fish. So I'm just wondering how many people and how is that being enumerated or tracked? I mean, do you have, are we, are we tracking where people are getting these, these fish from and, you know, how many, how many people and how many fish are we talking about here?
Ma'am Chair, I will turn the mic over to Alita Trainer. Thank you.
Hi, Alita. Thanks.
Hello, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'll attempt to answer this question. The Division of Subsistence does collect harvest data throughout the Cuscoquam River drainage as part of the postseason salmon survey effort. However, the data on harvest intensity or number of fishers who travel to certain locations isn't something that we gather. We do have harvest by species in each district, but it is hard to quantify effort in those areas. Through this data, we can see by community that fishers particularly from Bethel, as Nick had said earlier, do travel to harvest Chinook salmon in District Four. And it makes up a quantifiable, quantifiable percentage of Bethel's harvest, but I can't answer exactly how many fishers exactly are traveling to District Four.
Yeah, I'm kind of torn on this. I mean, I, you know, I'm sitting here thinking this through and, you know, if there's no, you know, we're making escapement goals, you know, I, I don't want to arbitrarily like restrict access to, to the fish. I, I also understand why people would want to be judicious about, about how many fish are harvested because of, you know, concerns about king salmon throughout, throughout the river system. So, you know, I'm, I'm struggling, I'm struggling with this. And I know that we're still providing some opportunity, but if it sounds like that's a significant portion of the, of the Bethel king salmon harvest perhaps, you know, those have real implications as well. So any other board discussion? Mr. Carpenter?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair. One of the interesting things that was brought up earlier is specific to the A and S is that it was, was being met or exceeded. We don't necessarily see that a lot in many places. And I guess maybe a question for the subsistence division, we're specifically speaking about District Four here. Is the A and S, is that A and S that was referenced earlier specific to District Four? And is the, the number being exceeded because there are so many more people traveling down from places like Bethel?
Through the chair, to Member Carpenter, the A and S is for Districts Four and Five combined. And it is, and the bottom of this staff comment here, it is six thousand nine hundred to seventeen thousand salmon. I don't know if we do have data on whether the A and S has been met because of the contributions of non-local fishermen. Perhaps Alita has more local insight on that? Alita? Through the chair, Member Carpenter, we don't have data on that. It's too fine of, it's just not something that our survey instrument is able to pick up to attribute harvest to location towards A and S. We just count total number of fish caught by larger areas than that. So unfortunately, I can't answer that question.
Thank you. And if I, if I could just maybe make a statement, Madam Chair, while I have the floor. I think one of the interesting things in the department's comments is that it says that it supports the regulatory changes generally. But it also states right after that, that during periods of low productivity, obviously, the king salmon escapement goals, while they may not be at the midpoint or the high point, they, they are, they are being met. Obviously, we don't have enough information necessarily regarding chum salmon. But this will be a, a permanent change, you know, in, in regulation and you know, I guess I could see this going back and forth depending on the state of salmon stocks in this area. And I guess that's what the three-year board process is all about. Generally, I like to support local communities that are trying to, you know, self-regulate to a certain degree, but as many of you have said, I'm kind of torn right now because I also don't want to eliminate opportunity from people that live in an area where they could transient to this area to provide for subsistence. And I think by doing this, that's probably what we'll be doing. So that's what I have for now.
Any other board discussion? Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A question for staff. In the staff comments here, it says that preliminary forecasts for chum and king salmon is, is predicted to be lower. Is that low as in predicting not to meet escapement goals or, or how low is low?
Through the chair, this is Nick Smith with the department. So for king salmon, we're looking at another well below average run coming back to that area, and that's informed from really parent year escapements and just the general trends around the area. I'd imagine that would be similar in the end of season, we fly the aerial survey, we're gonna be at the lower end of the escapement goal. For chum salmon, you know, we don't have assessment down there, but we're making, you know, our broad assumptions based on the current trends of chum salmon across all of AYK. That's informed from the Cuscoquam and the Yukon areas. Right now, it's gonna be very close if any of those areas meet escapement goals for chum once again.
So if you don't meet escapement goals on king salmon, will you shut down the subsistence fishery?
Through the chair, or Madam Chair, yes, if we do not meet escapement goals for, for king salmon, we will be taking restrictions on the subsistence fishery. This is no different than what has been going on for a long time in the Cuscoquam River. We had to take severe restrictions, not just on kings, but chums and more recently Coho. And that has put a tremendous burden on subsistence fishing, but escapement goals are the priority.
And then, so just so that I'm clear, the in-river is shut down? In-river subsistence?
Ma'am Chair, the in-river subsistence fishery has varied the last number of years. For king salmon, there has been a little bit of harvest available. And there's been, in the lower portion of the Cuscoquam River, very short directed fisheries. They almost look like commercial openers. You're looking at twelve-hour fishing periods spread about once, maybe twice a week through June. Chum salmon has been more or less closed for subsistence fishing the last couple of years, trying to meet escapement goals. The only shining point right now is sockeye, and that's where it makes it tricky is there's been an abundance of sockeyes. So there's been trying to put sockeye on people's fish racks while conserving chum salmon. So there's been very little opportunity provided with the impetus of trying to get sockeye. And then Coho, last year was our worst Coho run on record, which the subsistence fishery was closed.
Okay. And then just harking back to the, the actions of the Federal Subsistence Board, those actions were, were related to, was that to sections of the Connectoc? Is that correct? Then?
Madam Chair, yeah, it's just within that portion of, I guess, the lower portion that falls within the refuges, that's where the Federal Subsistence Board has.
Right. Okay, so there were restrictions, in-river restrictions taken on behalf by the Federal Subsistence Board for their jurisdiction. There hasn't been any commercial, I mean, subsistence closures on king salmon in river. There have been on chum and Coho. I just want to make sure I'm tracking this.
Ma'am Chair, in the Cuscoquam River, yes, there's been restrictions for kings, chum. Well, it's really all species by the time it's done because they all overlap on their run timings. And then in Cuscoquam Bay, out in District W4, for the last handful of years, we've been shutting it down on Sundays.
Okay. Thank you. Other board discussion? Ms. Mitchell?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm fairly inclined to support this proposal. While I do see it as kind of a reduction in subsistence opportunity. I also identify, or I also noticed that this proposal is coming to us from, you know, local subsistence Quinnahock users and kind of this precautionary measure that whilst on runs or not doing so well, this kind of reduce effort by everyone and kind of slow the, the effort on these runs that seem to be struggling across this region. I, I think it's a kind of an appropriate thing to support at this time, and I think I'll be in support of this proposal.
Other board discussion? Mr. Zare? Oh, Mr. Wood?
Yeah, I don't see any other hands up or further discussions. So as far as a cost analysis approval, the proposal may result in additional direct costs for a private person to participate in a fishery by requiring additional time to harvest salmon. Approval of the proposal is not expected to result in any additional costs to the department. Do you want to go through this subsistence regulation review now, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Okay. Is a stock in a non-subsistence area? No. Is the stock customarily and traditionally taken or used for subsistence? Yes. The board made positive customary and traditional use findings for halibut, Pacific cod, and all other finfish in the Cuscoquam area, and specific findings for king, chum, sockeye, Coho, and pink salmon in the Cuscoquam River drainage, reference five A C zero one two eighty-six. Next, can the, can a portion of stock be harvested consistent with sustained yield? Yes. Next question was, what amount is reasonable necessary for subsistence use? In January of two thousand thirteen, the board revised the salmon amount necessary. A and S findings in the Cuscoquam Bay District Four and Five as follows, six thousand nine hundred to seventeen thousand salmon, referencing the regulation. The board has not made an A and S finding on non-salmon species in the Cuscoquam area. Next criteria does, do the regulations provide a reasonable opportunity for subsistence use? My conclusion is yes. I believe Wood would be joining me with that. And then the last criteria is unnecessary to reduce or eliminate other uses to provide a reasonable opportunity for subsistence use. I do not believe that to be the case. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would call a question.
Thank you. I would just maybe put on the record that with respect to six, yeah, I would agree with you. Yeah. Okay, the question has been called. Errors and omissions, Director Raybong?
No, Madam Chair.
Mr. Peterson?
No, Madam Chair.
Captain Frenzel?
No, Madam Chair.
And I'm gonna go back for Lisa Olson, too, please. The errors and omissions from subsistence.
No, Madam Chair.
Director Nelson, please call the roll.
Final action on Proposal 173. Carpenter?
Yes.
Zare?
Yes.
Carlson Van Dore? I'm sorry, Carlson Van Dore?
Yes.
Sorry. Mitchell?
Yes.
Wood?
No.
Motion carries, four in favor, one against, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Director Nelson, is there any miscellaneous business that the board needs to attend to?
Madam Chair, I have none.
Commissioner?
So, Madam Chair, do we send the bill for this meeting to the new vice chair?
Yes, please.
No, I think this, I, I want to just conclude by saying this was our fault. The proposal got lost. I think it was right for the board to take this up and, and consider it because it was our fault. So we'll make sure that doesn't happen again.
Thanks, Commissioner. Mr. Wood?
Just an observation, Madam Chair. If this is how Zoom works for one of these kind of meetings, you will never see me vote in favor of going with Zoom unless absolutely required to.
I concur. Any other board comments or, or discussion before we adjourn? All right. I don't see any additional RCs that have come in as the board was deliberating, so I just kind of wanted to make that noted for the record. Mr. Wood?
Just one last item, Madam Chairman. I'm hoping, uh, Member Jensen's recovering from his surgery well, but knowing John, he's probably listening in just out of curiosity. And I just want to thank him for all the years of service that he provided to this board. It was quite valued and I'm gonna miss his presence here, but I'll give him a call whenever I feel it's appropriate and necessary. Thank you, John, and that's all I have.
Thank you, John. Yes, absolutely. And certainly send our well wishes to Member Jensen, and I certainly am gonna miss his presence on the board, at least for the next three years. We'll see. One other thing that I just wanted to know before we, before we adjourn is that the Commissioner and I had some discussion based off of a miscellaneous agenda item, I think that we took up as statewide about perhaps convening the Board Process Committee in the relatively near future to discuss, you know, process and timing associated with, with particularly stocks of concern, designations, and action plan drafts. So I just kind of wanted to put that on the record. I'll probably be reaching out to the chair of that committee. I think that's you, Mr. Wood. And, and looking for some times where we, we can consider a meeting or convening that committee just to have some, some initial discussions about how we might, might tackle that a little bit better because I'm anticipating additional stocks of concern and additional issues related to timing of action plans, you know, coming up at some time in the near future. So perhaps, you know, stay tuned for more in that space.
Gee, thanks, Madam Chair.
You are welcome. See what happens? All right. Anything else today? All right. Well, I think that, that's a wrap, folks, and, and we'll see Tom and Mr. Zare and Mr. Wood back in the fall, and best wishes to Member Mitchell, Member Jensen, and Member Heimbach. Thank you all for being with us today. With that, the meeting is adjourned at five forty-one PM. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye. Thank you, everybody. Have a great summer.
You, too, everybody.